Lisa, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Folks, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, June the 6th at 6:30 PM. Please call the roll. Here.
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 Also present, Fitzpatrick Cathwood, Fire Department, Fire Chief has an excused absence, Fire Police Chief has an excused absence, and the Service Department Superintendent has an excused absence this evening. I'd like to ask everybody to stand under the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we'll look at the minutes. Move to approve the minutes for the May 2nd, 2023 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Second by Asherall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the May 8, 2023 Special Trustee Meeting?
Second.
Second by Asherall. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the May 30, 2023 Special Trustee Meeting?
Second.
Second by Asherall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the June 1, 2023 Special Trustee Meeting?
Second.
Second by Augustine. Any discussion?
I will abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain by Asherall.
Seven people virtual.
Seven virtual.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to make my announcement?
Well, I wanted to ask, do we want to, is Fire going to stay with us tonight? Or do you want to let him go first?
I think he'll probably be leaving.
I've got a gentleman who came in from Columbus.
Okay. You just got dropped.
How much do you have, Sean?
Five things.
Do you mind?
Alright. First is a request appropriations not to exceed $7,800 for emergency repairs to the brakes on Engine 31-2 from WW Williams. This is the 2005 KME fire engine that we have.
So moved.
Second.
And I will add in there also that these brakes have not been touched or replaced since, I think it was Chief Horton.
2012, looking at the maintenance record, that's the last time they were replaced. So it's, it's time.
Because I did a big gulp when I heard the sound of that price also, but it's been, it's past due.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The next is a request appropriations of $1,400 for the annual fire app license fee from Flow MSP. This is the software we use when we do our fire inspections. It allows us to take pictures and do an actual pre-fire plan of each commercial building, given us our fire flow rate if we were to have an emergency at that building. So it's a pretty important application that we use at the Fire Department.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Augustine. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, requesting a one-month leave of absence for firefighter paramedic Logan Davis. He was just sworn in last week, week and a half ago, to Brooklyn Fire Department full-time. So he, during his training there, he needs to take a leave of absence so he can focus on his time there for that, for that time, so.
No objections. Well, I ran into him at the grocery store. He's pretty excited.
He is. He previously had worked part-time there, so he got to know those guys pretty well, and he was excited to take that job. He'll be, he'll do good there. He's a very solid firefighter and paramedic that we have here at the department, and he's going to do good there, and we look forward to having him back after his month of training.
Thank you.
The next is requesting a two-month leave of absence for firefighter EMT Aiden Samuel. He got sworn in at Alliance Fire Department full-time, and their training is, requires him to take a leave of absence for two months there. He's a newer hire, but he works at, he's worked with us in Valley City, and he's, he's made a good impression with us here, and we want to let him focus on that and look forward to having him back in two months here.
Perfect. Thank you.
And the final is request the approval to accept the resignation of firefighter paramedic Mariah Baylog. She was sworn, she was sworn in the night that we sworn the lieutenants and myself as Assistant Chief. Cleveland EMS is demanding a lot out of her with hours and everything, and she says work's been crazy for her, and she wants to kind of take a step back and focus on her personal life when she can, so, you know, we fully appreciate that. She, she was a very good employee during that, the time that we had her. She was very motivated, but completely understand you got to focus on your personal life.
We have to vote on that, don't we, Martha? So moved.
Is that a motion?
For all three, yes. Second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any else for fire? Anyone in the audience, anything for fire? Thank you, young man.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
You lived to tell.
Did a good job.
Did it.
You were acting Assistant Chief. Now we're going to call you Acting Chief.
Acting Chief.
Thanks, Sean. Have a good night.
Do we have a special guest this evening?
Yes, we have three special guests with us this evening. So just kind of a quick recap. We sent out a water letter asking if some of the folks that have parcels in the town center would be interested in county water. That letter, the way it was broken down, would have been an assessment by the county, and I think we gave a cost estimate of about $32,000 that would be placed on each property over the course of 20 years. We received those results back, and I'm not surprised by them at all. I think that a lot of people don't agree with being assessed at that, that dollar amount. One of the things that has come to my desk is an opportunity for a TIF, and that would bring water into town center in a really interesting and unique way. And so I have had a conversation with Bethany Dentler from Medina County Economic Development, as well as Brian Cooper, who has driven all the way in from Columbus, because we don't have the virtual option anymore to give us some information and education as it relates to the TIF. And we also have Brian Penrose here, who will be available for questions specific to Mr. Sean and Mrs. Karen Gaffney's project in town center as it relates to the TIF. So Brian, if you want to come up to the podium, you can, and certainly if you have a presentation that you want to share, I think we have made you co-host.
If you could state your name and spelling.
Brian Cooper. Is this thing on?
Yeah.
It's Brian Cooper with Baker Tilly, and B-R-I-A-N-C-O-O-P-E-R.
And just so you know, Brian, that's not a mic for the room. It's for the virtual audience, so you don't have to speak into it, into it.
Thanks for the tip.
Thank you.
Photographers and everything.
Welcome to Hinkley Township, Brian.
And it's a lovely township. I drove through, very picturesque, and thanks for having me. My name is Brian Cooper. I'm with Baker Tilly. Baker Tilly's a top 10 accounting firm nationwide. We have a small consulting group within Baker Tilly called Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors, and so I spend my time consulting cities, townships, counties on public finance and economic development. I've been doing this for 20 years. Been working with Bethany Dentler and Medina County since probably 2009. And I'm here today to talk about tax increment financing. That's TIF for short. You'll probably hear me say it 100 times. And I just came in to give you a brief introduction to TIF. I'm happy to answer questions or participate in conversation. As far as business this evening, I don't believe there's any type of resolution or anything before the trustees tonight, so it's merely conversational. TIF stands for Tax Increment Finance, and it's a very common economic development tool in Ohio. There's, there's over 1,200 TIF districts throughout the state that have been used for various projects. TIF can sometimes be confusing because there's, there's over 10 different kinds of TIF in use in Ohio, but generally speaking, cities, counties, and township can create TIF areas, and it's a form of tax abatement on new real estate value. With the adoption of a TIF resolution, real estate taxes are abated, and payments in lieu of taxes or pilot payments are collected in the same amount and the same manner as real, real property taxes. So if your property is in a TIF, you get a tax bill normally, just like you otherwise would. The tax rates and tax amounts paid are the same. The only difference is after the treasurer collects it and settles, those taxes are moved to a separate fund at the township to be used for certain designated public infrastructure improvements. The I in TIF stands for increment, and so you have a base value, which is the value of the property and the current existing taxes as of day one. Those taxes remain the same and go in the same, go to the same taxing jurisdictions as they otherwise would. And the TIF captures the incremental value, so the new value. So if, if there were new construction and new value was created, that incremental tax would be diverted to pay for public infrastructure.
So just to be clear, Brian, the, the existing taxes would already, would still be collected as they are now?
Yeah, existing and new, they're collected exactly the same, same way. In fact, I have a little example here. If, if there's an existing property with a current market value of $250,000 and new construction happened for $5 million, the auditor might assign a new value to that, to that parcel of 5.25 million dollars. If the tax rate was 2.4%, the incremental taxes would be about 120,000 per year. The baseline property value and the baseline taxes would continue to go to the school district, the township, and the other taxing districts in the, in the taxing jurisdictions, and only the incremental value, the new value, would go to the township to help fund infrastructure projects.
That answered my question.
So some of the basics is for township-specific. Townships create TIF areas by resolution. It would take a majority vote of the township trustees, and in that resolution, the, it would specify the number of years the TIF would be in place, the exemption amount, the area or parcels to be included in the TIF. This can be one parcel, up to, up to many parcels. The specific public improvements to be made with TIF service payments. So the resolution will call out specifically what the dollars will be used for, and so once the township receives those TIF dollars, they would be limited to what they could use it for. In this case, I think we're talking about public infrastructure, including water and sewer, but there's a general list of things that could be used. And generally speaking, property owner is not needed by the township to, to create a TIF. Since about 60% of property taxes go to your local school district, there's some additional constraints on certain TIFs. If the township determines to do a TIF for greater than 10 years or more than 75%, then the school, the township will be required to enter into a school compensation agreement with the township. But if you limit your TIF to 10 years and no more than 75%, then a TIF can be created just by noticing the schools.
Is that an either/or, or it's, it has to be built? So it can't be above 10 years, and it can't be above 75%?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. Some examples of what the TIF funds can be used for would include public streets, off-street parking, storm and sanitary sewer retention, fire hydrants. This is a laundry list of items that can be used. It's certainly not exclusive, but you can see that a TIF can be broadly used to pay for qualified public improvements in, in the area. As far as school district involvement is concerned, as I noted before, if you stick to something less than a 10-year, 75% abatement, then a 14 Notice is required to go to the school district. But if you go longer than that, then there's a 45-business-day notice, which can be waived if the schools agree to it. And then the, the long and short of it is, is you enter, you end up entering into a compensation agreement with the school district to determine how you're going to split the TIF revenue. There are a lot of questions that come up with TIF financing, including what we're going to use the money for once we have it, what is the private developer proposing to build, how are, how does the private financing portion of this work, what is the legal structure that constrains not only us, but the developer? Do we need credit enhancement ratings or a bond issue? These all go into the discussions of, of determining what your plan is before you come with a resolution. So it's good to have most of these questions answered before you do that. If, but some of these might not apply to us, any, any given transaction. TIF does have certain risks associated with it that you should consider before embarking on creating a TIF, especially if you, you, the township or the private developers, depending on the TIF revenues for repayment. There is a private financing risk, so that means usually when you're building private improvements, which create new value, whether that's a house or a commercial building, many, most of the time, you have to go to a bank and get a loan, so you have to be able to secure that financing, not the township, but the private developer, and they have to be able to draw down on that loan and be in good standing with the bank in order to complete construction. That brings up construction risk. Many things can, can create risks with a new construction pro, pro, a new construction project, cost of materials, availability of materials, the construction contract, the general contract to subcontractors. Sometimes there can be delays in construction. Sometimes the, the timeline can get thrown off, or the, or the whole project can get thrown off, so you want to take those into account. As I mentioned, TIF is really driven by the incremental value that's created when, when you're building a new project, and so you also have valuation risk. You might think, hey, this project is going to be $5 million of new tax-based value. Auditor might drive around and have a different idea of what the value is. They might say it's worth 3 million. They might say it's worth 8 million. So that, that can pose its own set of risks. And then if there's bonds or other financing mechanisms involved, debt service coverage, concentration, and delinquencies all play a factor into evaluating a TIF. On the public side, when you're, when you're thinking about doing a TIF or thinking about entering into a developer agreement, what you'll normally see is, first you'll see a TIF resolution, which is the township authorizing and creating the TIF. And then if there is a developer involved, typically you'll have a development agreement or some other type of agreement that says the township is going to agree to do this, and the developers are going to agree to do that, and as long as everything works, then we're in good shape. And if something, if somebody doesn't keep their end of the bargain, then, then what happens? So when a, when a, when the public entity considers a TIF, what they really should be thinking about is what, you know, does this project comport with the vision of, of the township? What are the community needs? Who is the developer? What type of projects have they done in the past? What is their financial strength and ability to deliver the project? And then lastly, and most importantly, the township needs to develop, to determine their level of commitment to the project, and whether or not they're going to offer incentives or support of, of the project. And those can all be done, you know, through a discussion and negotiation process. On the private side, the developer really needs to articulate the project in terms of the amount of new investment in the community, the impact to the community, the overall vision of the development, and the, the ability to deliver the, the project to, to the community. And they, they too also need to identify if, if a TIF is needed and what other incentives they might need in order to complete the project. I'm going to skip through a couple of these. With a smaller development like the one we've been talking about, a lot of times a TIF can be helpful in what we call a, on a reimbursement basis, and that is where your private developer would go and say, you know what, I'm going to install these public improvements with my own funds in advance, and then I'll agree to be reimbursed over time from the TIF revenues if they're there. Now, the nice thing about that arrangement is it gets infrastructure into the ground early, and the developer, someone else, not the township, is taking the risk of development, construction, and TIF revenue availability. Basically, what the township would agree to is, to the extent they receive TIF revenues, that they will transfer them over up to a reimbursement amount that's agreed upon between the township and the developer. So this creates a, a lower-risk situation for the township. That being said, all the risks still need to be explored and discussed and understood, but it's a fairly typical way to fund infrastructure with, with, with a private developer's money instead of the township coming out of pocket itself. Alternatively, and slightly differently, when the township creates a TIF, that TIF fund sits on your books, and it can be used for infrastructure as you, as you define. And so if you do have a portion of the township that is going to develop over time, and you want to create a fund that will be available to fund future infrastructure projects, and the township would be in charge of it, it could implement a TIF on its own without any developer agreement, and then determine in the future how and when to fund that infrastructure. And it could even reduce the, you know, any other general fund or, or other taxi monies that are needed to accomplish the infrastructure financing in the first place. So I'll pause there and see if there's any questions, and I'm happy to stick around for the discussion.
Appreciate that, Brian. Thank you for being here.
Hey, you're welcome.
Do the trustees have any questions for Brian as it relates to just basics about the TIF?
What's the background of Baker Tilly?
Say that again.
What is the background of Baker Tilly?
Back, Baker Tilly is a top-nine accounting firm, so we're the ninth-largest accounting and CPA firm.
How are you involved in this project?
I was invited here by the trustee Augustine and Bethany Dentler from the Medina County Economic Development Project. I have no relationship with the developer.
How did Baker Tilly become familiar with the TIFs?
Oh, I've specialized in economic development for 20 years.
Okay, so the TIF, you're basically, you're, you're trying to create an opportunity for businesses to invest in an area, correct? Make it attractive to a business?
You know, I, the way I see TIF is, TIF is a tool for townships, counties, cities, that creates a fund for you to fund infrastructure. That's, that's all it is. It, I think it's attractive to residents and businesses alike to have infrastructure, and really the benefit of a TIF that I see is it creates a new cash flow for the township to, to support infrastructure.
Would you consider it a form of taxation, when drawing from those taxes? No?
Well, so TIF is a redirection of property tax, property taxes.
Yeah. Okay. Good enough.
Yeah.
One of the things that the trustees had asked me to do was to bring in, you know, some more education about this, and that's why we, I reached out to you, so I appreciate you driving all the way from
It's my pleasure.
To be here. Bethany, do you want to add anything to the conversation?
Maybe just to be a little bit more specific about.
If you come up and, thank you.
Just wanted to be a little bit more specific about Brian's role, since, since you had asked. So the Economic Development Corporation serves as the administrator for the Medina County Port Authority, and when the Port Authority built the fiber network, how many years ago now? It feels like 20, but probably about 15. We worked with Brian and his firm to issue the bonds to build the network. When it comes to other Port Authority projects, such as issuing bonds to help companies save sales tax on construction materials, I call Brian as the Port Authority's municipal advisor, because he's a public finance expert, and he helps us get the project through the, through the books, so to speak. So Brian has been working in Medina County for a number of years. He actually worked with the city of Medina to create the TIF district that helped to fund the parking garage that is now next to City Hall, and managed to get the school, the local school district to agree to 100% 15-year TIF. So he's very good at what he does when it comes to TIFs, but it's in support of what the township or the municipality is looking to do. Brian is not, you know, a developer representative. If he comes in, if he gets involved in a project, it would be as a township representative, as your advocate, and helping to make sure that all of the paperwork is done properly, helping you find the, an attorney who can help to write TIF legislation or approve documents, the proceeds for, you know, his costs, and the attorney cost could be written into and built into the TIF proceeds. So it wouldn't cost the township anything. It would be on the developer's end to, to, to roll that into the TIF project. But just, just wanted to share that that was Brian's background, and I, I, I reached out to Brian to say, hey, you know, we're talking about TIFs in Hinkley Township. I need some help. So.
Curious how this ended up here, that's all.
Yeah. There you go.
Thanks for coming up.
Sure.
I, I actually have a couple of questions for you, Brian. And that is, you had mentioned resolution, but I, is resolution the first step? Because I feel like there's like maybe five steps that should happen before a resolution, and that is, which I, you know, TIFs have been mentioned for the last, I feel like, two and a half months, and we still don't know the area that we're looking at. I mean, is it all of the town center? Is it just the Gaffney property? And we need to know what this would be used for. If it's going to be used for water, I've been hearing that the developer has found a way to run water that would be a fraction of what the county had presented to us. But again, I've seen nothing about, are we comparing apples to apples? Where's the water going to go? Is it going to go in any of the three scenarios that we had presented, excuse me, in our letter? So I feel like we need to get all of that information. I kind of feel like we're maybe putting the cart before the horse right now, but I'm curious what the steps.
Yeah, you're, you're correct. The, the resolution is, is the final step, and you, you wouldn't pass a resolution and then figure out all that stuff afterwards. The, the, the process is to engage, if, if the township is willing to entertain those discussions, then what I would suggest is you have, you have a designated township representative engage with the developer, you, you, to determine what the cost is and vet those costs, understand what the improvements are, and, you know, are they going to be sufficient for the township? Are they going to be sufficient for the, the county? Vet those costs, get those answers, questions answered. As far as the number of parcels that it would include, the, that's up to the township. It could be just the developer parcels, that, that is a common type of, of project financing that has been done all over, where you just take the parcels from the, from the developer and TIF those. that has been done all over where you just take the parcels from the from the developer and TIF those. If but it could include other parcels. If if there was an area that was likely to develop, and that's what you do. You literally you get out a map and say, okay, what are the parcels that we might TIF? How might they develop? And and are these? Is there a nexus between the parcels that we're putting in the TIF and the the water improvements that we're doing? And then if if everything looks good. Then you put together a term sheet or a letter of intent that spells out all of the questions that you have. I'm sure the developer has questions as well. And you enter into a letter of intent and or present it to the trustees. And if if there's still questions at that point, then you keep asking those questions and 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 work it out. But really, I think the first step is if it's something that the township is interested in pursuing is to get a a designated person from the township to continue those conversations to see what what can come of it.
Almost as an exploration committee, so to speak, just to sit down and understand. You know, what are the areas that we're looking at? What is the central value? What are the the routes of the potential infrastructure? I think that it's just helpful to on the economic development side and for the developer to know, is there? Is there an indication of interest from the township that you're at least willing to continue asking questions and exploring the option?
And so that's why we have Brian here behind you, Brian. Brian Penrose, to answer some of those questions so that it's a fluid conversation. And we can talk about Mr. Gafter, Mr. and Mrs. Gaffney's project. I know that when I had, we we all three had gotten an email from Mr. Gaffney asking us to hold off on the water water letter. He was spending his own significant dollars in obtaining water infrastructure costs as it relates to his project. And when he last spoke with me, I would think it was at the last, right before the last meeting. He said that they had come in much lower than we had quoted in our letter. And he was disappointed we had sent the letter. I was equally disappointed. And so maybe you can shed some light on some of the questions that trustee Ashwell has as it pertains to the cost for the water infrastructure.
Sure, if I can, I'll be happy to. For one moment, just just to rebut that, the the letter that went out, Mr. Gaffney had no authority to say whether we should send it or not. That letter we promised to this community before Mr. Gaffney had started this project. And it was a separate public infrastructure project, had nothing to do with the private enterprise. So that's why that letter was sent out. I just wanted to clarify that. Go ahead.
So and I'm happy to speak to that to the extent that I can, you know. Again, my name is Brian Penrose. I was here with you back at the beginning of April. I appreciate you having me back. Sean and Karen Gaffney have asked me to be here simply to answer any questions you have that that we can't answer at this time. You know, it's very early in any stages, any investigation, any discovery of of what the feasibility and possibilities are. And to simply, there's been a lot of misinterpretation. And we've heard different things on what their position is relative to the TIF. So I'm here to be clear and state what their position is. And and that is they are excited about the opportunity of a TIF and to bring water to the center of the township. They're intrigued by it. At the same time, they want to be clear that it's only something that they want to do for the township. If it's something the township wants, if it's something the township is willing to dive deeper in in partnership between public and private. This is not something that they're seeking to drive. It's not something that their project for the development of their property is dependent upon. Would they prefer it? Absolutely. It'd be great. It would enhance the value of their property and the surrounding properties and the properties that were able to tie into the extension of the main. So in the time that's intervened since I was last here. Sean has been doing some due diligence and it's very preliminary. But just looking at some of the different routes from which you could possibly extend the water main into the center of town. And so a lot of the questions that Brian talked about in terms of the parcels that would be affected or who would be able to get to tap in potentially dependent upon the route. And the cost is a lot less than I think even Sean and Karen imagined. And the cost depends, obviously, how far you're coming and where you're coming from. But he's done a probable cause, cost and analysis on three different routes. Two of them are very similar in cost, about 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars. Come down 303 or from the northwest from the Skyland Falls development. And then there's a third from the Mattingly Road extension, which is a little bit more. I think it's like 17 or 18. Don't hold me to that approximately. And and by far, I can tell you that the cheapest option for him is groundwater is 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 the wells. Again, is that his preference? And Karen's preference? No. I think it'd be a great opportunity. And what they've asked me to suggest for everyone here to think about is when you get another bite at this app. Is this a one time opportunity? Meaning they're not trying to hold this over anybody's head by any means. But what they're saying is we're willing to do this. We're willing to front this cost to do this. Now, but if we go ahead with our project, which we're going to do, and we don't explore the TIF and we don't bring water into this time, who else is going to come along later and front the money for that development of infrastructure? So I think it's just a, they're excited and they think it's a great opportunity between both public and private. But it's something they're really only interested in diving deeper in if the township is interested in doing that. And if the township's interested in doing that, then they'll be at the table. And they'll share the information that they have relative to the probable cost analysis and and the different route options and even estimate on surveys for the preferred option, which would be coming down 303. So if that's something that the township wants to form a committee like Bethany and Brian were talking about to to continue that conversation. Let's have that conversation. If it's something that you're not interested in, okay, great. And we'll we'll be happy to share with, you know, the news with the development of the project. So as it as it comes about. Questions that I can answer? I don't know if I can, but if I can, I'll take a shot.
Estimates involve the county because I'm sure the county would the intensive have it become a public client.
It would be, yes, since an analysis that will be presented to the county.
So the county hasn't been involved yet?
No, not yet. No.
My understanding that there was a checklist that may have been kind of gone through roughly.
Some background information, but in terms of who's driving the bus, so to speak, in terms of financing and doing the due diligence, that's been the Gaffneys doing it. And, you know, they're willing to present, share that information and further develop that information with some of the questions that Brian and Bethany have talked about with the township, if that's what the township wants to do.
Well, speaking of that, I will reiterate that Bethany called me over the weekend. And my position is that this is a tax on the people. Whether you're drawing tax funds that they would get from the development of that property or you're having them vote whether or not to do an assessed project or a levy project, it's still a tax on the people in the community. They're going to pay for it ultimately.
No matter how you do it, Jack, they will pay for it ultimately.
Right. That's why I say they should have a choice in how it's done. We shouldn't implement a TIF and just take that from them, the three of us.
Respectfully, you're not wrong. You're not wrong, but it's also only one side of the equation. I mean, what Brian's talking about is we're driving up land value and tax value, which a dinner additional tax dollars are generated. They go to the benefit ultimately to the township. Granted, in smaller increments over the 10 years, as you repay back the development of the infrastructure, but then the TIF gets paid back. And the township has more tax dollars available to it. The school district has more tax dollars available to it. So there's a benefit to this. Yeah, somebody's got to pay for this. My client's willing to advance the payment for that. But who benefits from this? Not just the Gaffneys. Not just whoever ties in, but the entire township from the tax that's generated.
Have a say in whether that happens.
We couldn't agree more. That's why I'm here. We're here. We want to be partners with you. If you don't want to be her partner, that's okay.
I think it's a great vision he has. Don't get me wrong. And he said, one way or the other, he's still going to develop that property.
That's right. And understand, because we're using the word developer because that's the standard language. You know, that that is his like this technical role. But as I shared with you in April. The Gaffneys are 29 year residents. They're not doing this project to make money. They're not building these buildings in town center and historic district for their livelihood. This is not what they do to depend on their livelihood. They're doing it because they want to give back to Hinkley for the future of Hinkley. And they're doing it frankly, not this is not their words, this is my words, out of the goodness of their hearts. Because they see it as a good opportunity for this community. So they're they're looking for partners in the township. But if the township doesn't want to be a partner, that's okay. We understand.
And it is a very community minded project.
It is.
Right off the bat, I think it it the project screams when I saw it virtually here at one of the meetings. There's so much green space, open space for families, amphitheater parks. That's just my opinion. My I also have a very strong opinion that if we don't work together now, like you said. I mean, anybody could come in, drop, anybody could come in and bring in water and we would have no say at all.
Or or not. And then, you know, the world goes on. And whether we want it to slow down or not, it develops. And then you're looking backwards when you could have done it at a fraction of the cost that's here now. And someone's willing to pay for it. And if you don't, if if that's something you want to pass on, that's okay. That's the Gaffney's position. But they're making the offer. They're extending their willingness.
Whether water comes in here or not, we have no say at all. So let's let's make that very clear. If the county runs the water, if a private developer runs the water, we have no say over that at all to begin with. What we do have a say over is the TIF. And what I just wanted to make a couple of public notes on is because there has been, you know, chatter since last which unfortunately, it's been a month since that last meeting. But I did speak to the county also. And I I talked to Jeremy Cinco again, the Medina County sanitary engineer. And I wanted to know because this very general term was thrown out by Melissa at the last meeting saying significantly less. And now, thank you, you're saying 1.3, 1.2 to 1.3 million if the water is run from the Old Skyland Development, correct?
Correct.
That's the number you're
That's the probable cause analysis. We have it currently.
So that's that's the num, it's nice to at least have a number for the first time. But without seeing anything, I don't know, is it going the length of 303? Is it going down the same length of Ridge Road that we had looked at? So we don't know if we're comparing apples to apples. On top of that, you know, what Jeremy wanted me to make very clear to everyone, because this is not the county's way of making money. The county is not trying to get rich if they're going to do this as an assessed project, okay? What he built into his quote, and he is not sure whether or not this is part of the 1.2 to 1.3 million quote is did these, are these numbers including the engineering costs and the inspection costs? Because those are all numbers that the county factored in when they gave this, you know, roughly $2 million estimate that went out in this letter. Additionally, if you're going to come down 303 through Skyland, you have to drill through a lot of rock. But you can't backfill that with just dirt. You have to backfill that with the same same material that you're digging out of that, which is another added cost to the project. And I don't know if these have been factored into this 1.2 or 1.3 million. Now, Mr. Gaffney would have the advantage over labor because the county would have to pay prevailing wages, which they would have to undoubtedly pay more for labor. However, the county also is a government, so they're exempt. So we're talking about a lot of money and materials that the county would not have to pay tax on. Mr. Gaffney would have to pay tax on that. So that can kind of cancel, well, this is what the sanitary engineer has come back to to me with. And that would kind of cancel out between the prevailing wages and the taxes on the materials. So he said he's not sure where these numbers are coming from. But I just wanted to state that to eliminate any possible confusion from the public with, you know, how are these numbers so much less? Because the county's not doing this, trying to make money. The township did not send out this letter because we're trying to make money. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone was very clear on that as well.
I appreciate that, but I wouldn't want to elaborate again what the intent here. You know, you 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 began by saying, you know, we can't control if a developer, if the county wants to bring water. That may be so. That's not Mr. Gaffney's position here. Mr. Gaffney and Mrs. Gaffney are not saying we're bringing in water no matter what. We can do it through the TIF or we'll do it on our own. Or we're going to do it the route that we want to do it. That's not what I'm here to tell you. Someone I'm here to share with you. If you want to see the numbers, you want to see how, I'm not the engineer, you know? If you're asking me to do the math, I can't do that.
And I'm sorry, I was not trying to put you on this. I just, we're talking about this right now. So I wanted to make sure we were all very clear from any miscommunication from the last meeting. And I wanted to ask while you were up here because you were the ones who came back with the 1.2 to 1.3 million. That's what you had said. So that's that is why I wanted
And but so what I what I what I'm trying to say here is that if you want to have further conversation, when I say you, the township.
Sure.
Then, okay, great. Then we're willing to share the information that we've found so far. And let's have a conversation. Does it make sense at that cost? Does it make sense to come down 303, 303 or come from a different route? You know, no one, no one is trying to dictate what should happen here whatsoever. Again, what the Gaffneys have asked me to share with the residents of Hinkley is this is something that they're willing to do if the township is interested in doing it. They don't need it. They don't have to do it. They're not going to do it on their own. They want to be good public servants in this sense. And they want to be contributing residents to the township and be good neighbors. And that's what they're offering to do. And front the bill for it, and front the bill for the due diligence. And they're not just going to do it and spend the money and not get reimbursed for it because they don't need it. And they're just not going to do it. So the TIF is an opportunity, is an option where the township could benefit by bringing water to the center of town if it's interested in doing that. And the Gaffneys, for lack of a better term, are the bank. They finance it ahead of time. And it's just something they're offering, not something they're demanding.
And I appreciate you being here and Bethany and Brian being here because that was my intent today was to do our due diligence and really dig into this and get some more education and knowledge on this. So that moving forward, we could have constructive
Sure.
Educated conversation.
Sure. I I have a couple of questions.
So Brian, the other Brian?
On that question, if we were looking at the 1.3 million dollar. What did you call it? I don't know. Your back of the envelope. Is it achievable to reimburse that investment in 10 years based on a projected 75% increase property tax revenue on 9/8 of perfect? I I don't, I I don't see that. And it may be a question for the auditor's office. I don't see it. Good. Then you absolutely have to bring this story in to this conversation. And what is the projected term? And my other question on top of that is, I'm assuming there's going to be other costs associated with any TIF agreements in addition to the actual infrastructure, which could be legal, could be other charges.
Administrative, legal, administrative, of course. Of course, there are. Yeah. And that is part of the process is, so I I think what what Brian is saying, the way I think of it is another term instead of development agreement is a cooperative agreement. And so I think if the parties want to work cooperatively to answer these questions, then
But they are valid questions.
Without question, yeah. So the to to answer.
In this conversation, those type of realities.
Yeah, well, and 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 that is done through a TIF analysis where all the costs. So the preliminary and analysis shows a 10 year 75 10 year 75% TIF. Assuming a $10 million incremental value would generate about 1.3 million dollars over the 10 years. A $15 million investment would generate about $2 million over 10 years.
I use the current mileage from the township and wrote it down by
And I've reviewed the calculations in there in line with what our our estimates would be as well.
And you said it would be 1.3 million over 10 years if it was a $10 million investment.
Yeah, that's correct.
Which is a pretty significant investment, correct? Okay. And and so to make that clear, and I don't think there'll be any disagreement, that is deferred revenue. I know an additional 25% is is still significant on that increase. But But that's money absent the TIF that would go into the township funds.
Well, the township, the, yeah, the township funds, so the 1.3 million represents the amount that would go into the TIF fund.
And that would be reimbursed to private.
That's correct.
Developer, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, but minus the. If, if, if.
Investment is made, there's still going to be an increase in property tax revenue, correct?
That's without question. And what I was going to give you is the township's portion of that if you don't do a TIF. So the township's portion that goes into the infrastructure fund with the TIF is 1.3 million. But the same investment without the TIF, only $286,000 comes to the township.
But we are reimbursing back to, for the original infrastructure investment, we would be reimbursing that back to the developer.
But then after the 10-year mark, that the township would be garnering 1.3.
And these are assumptions.
And I think we said that some of the legal costs and things of that nature could be rolled into the TIF for the, the quote unquote developer.
What about, um, what happens if there's a levy passed during this 10-year? How does, how does that?
Uh, the levy, the new levy would get added to the, to the TIF.
Okay.
So if, if you're.
Million dollar, if, if it's a $10 million investment, um, that 10 million is going to count towards the levy.
Well, let me, let's say it differently. The current millage is 52.5 mils, right? If the schools or another taxing jurisdiction passes a levy for an additional five mils, then the millage collected under the TIF would be 57 mils. Because remember, the TIF collects property taxes this, in the same manner as taxes are otherwise collected. So a couple of things would happen with that. All things being constant, if a new millage was passed and collected, then the amount of reimbursement funds could go up. But remember, if you have a development agreement that says, hey, we're giving you 1.3 and that's it, then one, once you reach that number, you could reach it before year 10. Once that happens, either the funds are then retained by the township for other public improvements. They wouldn't go to developer or the TIF would end. If, if all of the public improvements are paid for by the TIF early, then it stops. And so you could, instead of a 10-year TIF, it could be a eight-year or a nine-year TIF. If the property taxes are higher or if the value is higher. So if you agree to the 1.3, just for discussion purposes, but instead of 10 million of value, there's 15, well, that's going to generate 2 million. So you're going to have, you're, you can either stop that TIF sooner or you can retain that, those extra dollars to pay for other infrastructure, uh, in and around that area.
Or on the other hand, if the investment doesn't live up to the projections, we could also, what happens then? Do the terms get extended or is there a new agreement that has to be created?
The developer's not made whole. Yeah. So if he puts in 1.3, but only 1 million comes out, then that's it.
So the term does not change.
No.
Regardless of the property tax assessment potential. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Other questions?
Some good.
You answered mine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thanks for having us.
Ms. Catwood.
Let's see.
Before you want to, can I ask a question? If the.
Jim, 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 can you go, Martha's not doing our meeting anymore. Someone is virtually.
Uh, Jim Byaloski, 2300 Sand Creek Trail. If the TIFs are such a good idea for this, why are there only four active Medina County right now? For all the projects going on, there's one in Wadsworth and two Medina, one in York, and that's it. So try and understand why it makes so much sense for this project when it's not being utilized.
So the TIF is a, is, is an economic development tool. And when it comes to economic development tools or incentives, we usually try to direct them to the area of greatest need. In a lot of cases, developers who come to me at the county level, they're more interested in, say, a property tax abatement, because what that does is gives them, uh, greater cash flow down the road. It's money, a check that they don't have to write, that they can then redirect to other purposes for their business operations. Every once in a while, we have a situation such as we have here, where the area of greatest need is in infrastructure. So, you know, putting that 1.2 million dollars out front now is something that he's willing to do. But, you know, ideally, if, if the, the TIF incentive could be used to repay him, then he'll have more money to put into another project or build the amphitheater sooner or build the steakhouse sooner. So it really just depends on what the developer needs. A lot of times developers just build in the cost of infrastructure into their overall development costs. But sometimes they say, you know what? It would make, it would make our cash flow work better. It would make the pro forma work better. It would make the project make more sense if we could have support in this particular area. And in some cases, it is infrastructure. So it just depends on, um, what they need as to which tool we can use to target. And in this case, it's an infrastructure tool. So, and I have talked with other, other communities that, or other developers who are interested in a TIF. But for whatever reason, the, maybe the township didn't want to do one, um, for whatever reason.
Well, in all fairness also, I want to add in, and I understand you're doing your job and it's a sales pitch. I understand that. But let's not confuse need versus want. I've heard, I've heard the word need several times. It's a want. And we just want to make sure that we're not losing sight of that. Thank you.
So what does this board feel about a TIF? Do you want to have a liaison that does further investigation? Are you feeling very strongly opposed, very strongly for? Where, where is this board?
I'm opposed.
Okay. I, I, I am, when I talked to Bethany earlier, thank you for the heads up, by the way, that you were coming, was not told prior. Um, I, I can play devil's advocate on this and I can see the benefits to it. I can also see the drawbacks to it. But there's still, we don't know, we don't know where we're looking at. We don't know what the water is that we're looking at. Where is it going to extend? Because there is at least one conflict of interest with one board member that I would not be able to vote on this, if it's something that's going to impact my property.
But you voted on map and zoning amendments. I don't understand how that's a conflict, but continue.
I would not vote on this because running water would impact my property value, making it worth more. So I would not vote in it, because I, I feel I'm very ethically sound. I know where I stand ethically. So I would not vote on.
That's your decision.
Actually, code of ethics is not a decision. Code of ethics is something that we are sworn to as elected officials.
Absolutely.
So, but there is at least one conflict of interest at this board that would not be able to vote for a test if it's going to be run and impact my property value.
But generally, no one tells you that you have a conflict of interest. It's an ethical decision that you make on your own. That's why I said it's your decision.
Would it be helpful if maybe our office could take a look, maybe work with the developer and try to understand where that line is?
And that's what I'm asking. If we want to explore those questions, then we, you know, we could create, one of us would be the liaison for that investigative work so that we could have further conversations, see if this is something that Hinckley Township is interested in. You have a lot of good questions that need to be answered. And we can't do that if we don't know which direction to go.
I, I do not, and I would not support this because I think it's a tax and the thing, same thing as Brian speaking, Mr. Gaffney said, he would take it to the community. If we want to do something like that, I'd be more willing to entertain it, but I would not put another tax on these people, whether it's a deferred tax or whether it's a levy or an assessment. That won't be a decision I'll make without talking to them.
I don't see how it's a tax.
Yes, sir. Paul O'Neil, 2398, Weymouth Road. Okay, we've had a lot of a developer give a pitch. I know a lot of people in the town are gun shy when developers give pitches based on what happened with conservation districts. I think it might be helpful if the board gets some independent advice. This might be an opportunity and maybe not. I appreciate Monique's position. This is where the water line will run exactly over the front of her property, not a zoning issue two or three houses down. So I get that part. But even still, I think the three of you should get, uh, decide on getting, and maybe having the developer, uh, fund, getting some counsel who can better advise you. I know you guys are here every Tuesday. You put a lot of hard work in, but you're not experts in development. And I, the county, I don't know if they're going to have the township's best interest at heart. Maybe they do, maybe they don't. But I think if you have somebody who's a fiduciary to the town, you'll get better advice. That's all I want to say.
Appreciate that. That's why, one of the reasons why we brought Brian Cooper in is because he has no correlation with Hinckley Township. And he would be a, a good voice of understanding and rationale as an outsider looking in.
I, I'm sure he's very good at the mechanisms of the, the TIF. But I think there's going to be questions like, let's say you have a historic building. Well, you have the Hinckley Historical Society that might be affected by this. It's a 501(c). Are they going to be affected by the TIF or they don't pay any taxes? Hinckley Township owns it. Okay. So no collection of taxes and, and then there's a lot of issues and then who pays for what? Do people want to opt in right away while it's being built? Get some help on how to structure.
That's what I'm.
They're trying to work with you. It might be, uh, you might be looking a gift horse in the mouth, um, and maybe not. But.
It's not a gift, Mr. O'Neil.
That, that, this is exactly what I'm asking is, do we want to pursue that? Do we want?
He's paying for it upfront and they'll draw the taxes out of the township to pay him back. That's what it is.
Based on his performance.
Which he's going to do anyway. Yes, but it's going to be going past a lot of the people's property. They're going to have better fire protection and, okay, so yes, it is a tax, but pub, public service is a tax. The police department is a tax. School services are a tax.
A lot of property. So is this other one. And we'll talk about this water survey when we get to it and how important that water was to those people on the survey.
I don't, I don't agree that this conversation is the equivalent of that conversation. We offered them an assessment of $32,000 versus a gentleman who's willing to develop and invest in our community for the purpose of the community.
All right, let's talk about the water survey right now.
Okay. So I just. The water survey results that were sent out that this board unanimously agreed to send out in November. That was sent out at the end of April. The results were received by the township. In total, we had 154 letters go out, not to 154 people. I want to stress that. There was 154 letters that went to the different prop, to the different parcels, okay? We received 27 letters back saying, yes, I will pay for water as an assessed project. Out of 154, we received 27 back saying, yes, that is 17.5%. Of those 27, eight of those properties, eight of those parcels belong to Mr. Gaffney. Four of those parcels belong to Pinky Commons. And three of those parcels belong to Foster's. So out of the 27 yes, 15 of them come from three people. We received.
So just to interject here, if I could, to Mr. O'Neil's point, yeah, people would want to tap in when somebody else is, somebody else theoretically is paying to run that line and they're not being assessed for it. But the entire community is paying for that through their taxes. And the entire community is not benefiting from that same line. That's my point. Everybody's being taxed to pay for this one line that's coming down here to service a limited number of buildings.
I, I, I really.
And in addition.
Agree with that.
In addition to this, even if the TIF happens and the Gaffneys pay for this water to be run, even if that happens, the water letter said it was between 30 and $50,000. I do want to stress that one of the biggest chunks of that is getting the water to your house. You still have to pay to tie into it and you still have to pay to run that water to your house. So this is not going to be some freebie for people who want to get the water. They're still going to be paying for it. We received, we received letters back with not a yes, not a no, which for those of you who watched the meetings, you know, no response was a no. So that counts as a no. We received no's back like that from people who emailed us saying, we want water. But in a letter of interest said, no, I'm not going to pay for it. So we did what we said we were going to do. We got the answer of the people, 154 parcels in total. 17.5% of them said, yes, they will pay for it. And of that 17.5%, more than half of it is coming from three people. That's not the, that's not the majority. That is not the majority. And I have heard time and time again that.
It's not the majority.
I, I, I agree. I don't know why it's funny, but I have heard time. It's Melissa. It's a county letter. The scare tactic to you, then you should rethink how you communicate. This is the fact. This is the fact that the county gave us.
If I could speak, that would be great. None of the information in here is really ours. It's a county letter. You've stated that multiple times. It's a county letter that they put on Hinckley Township letterhead. I didn't agree with sending it. I didn't agree with assessing people. I didn't agree to the, the numbers allocated here. I said, we should talk about the TIF option. We should talk about grant options. I did not agree to this letter. I'm the only trustee who didn't agree to this letter. And I'm saying to you right now and talking to some of the people that are business owners and parcel owners, they don't agree to an assessment of 32 to $50,000. That's what you're getting yeses and nos to, not to water as a whole.
That's what a publicly funded project would cost, which is what that was, which is what.
So are you opposed to a TIF exploration or not, which was the first question?
I am opposed to a TIF.
I'm opposed to a tax.
It's not, it's not a tax.
It, it is a tax.
Okay. So we're not designating someone on this board to move forward and do their due diligence and determine more of the answers to the questions had by this board as it is, to pursue it to this.
I am not. I will not entertain this board entering into a TIF unless it's put to the community.
We have our comprehensive plan.
I will not agree to a TIF unless.
Majority wanted to see water in town center, which is why we are looking at this. It's part of my due diligence to my constituents that I look into this opportunity.
And I think you did.
Very sad that this board is not aligned with that.
Thank you. Martha?
Okay. So I got two motions. I'm going to request to the board, a motion to approve resolution 060623-001, which approves the biannual payment of the OPWC loans, C1, the CI31W, which is $10,497.13 and CI55B, which is $7,543.68.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asher will call the roll.
Swager?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Obviously.
Yes.
And then the second is a motion to approve resolution 060623-02, which accepts the amended official certificate of estimate. which accepts the amended official certificate of estimated resources, which is amendment number two dated May 19, 2023 in the amount of $10,261,315.32. So I was, I'm sorry, I'll explain why we're doing this. I was notified in May from the county auditor's office that they had to make a correction to the commercial class values. And so therefore they had to amend their number, first amended certificate.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asher will call the roll, please.
Swedek?
Yes.
Asher?
Yes.
Obviously.
Yes.
And then finally, our fund status currently right now is $6,739,813.93, of which $1,104,301.64 are in bold investments. $5,635,000, yeah, $35,512.29 are in primary checking. And, and I note that I did prepare a purchase order for the, the new tanker. Is that $734,284 or $239,284, which is just about in excess of 10% of our onion revenue right now. That's it for me.
Pretty good.
Thank you, Marco.
I'll move to pay the bills in the amount of $159,182.18.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye.
Go to zoning.
It's me again. You guys have the email from Tom Z as it pertains to a cost cleanup quote for 25 River Road. This was a cost analysis that was done based on a recommendation by trustee Sweattick. And wanted to see what your thoughts were on moving forward on this project based on that cost analysis. It, they, I think the cost quoted was $8,800 and there was a break, breakdown attributed to that for you to see.
I'm surprised it came in much lower than I thought it would. With this in hand, I would suggest that I would like to get something to the property owner to advise him that we would like to move forward with this. Prior to doing so, give him one last opportunity to maybe clean it up at his own expense as opposed to us assessing it. I'm okay with setting a timeframe on that for a response if you'd like to do that.
Trustee Asher? Are you in agreement? Well, because the last time is the notice to the property owner, we've sent him 10 years worth of letters.
The last time we discussed this, we talked about, which we had a resident talk about septic, I believe. It was, something was backing up. It was, it was a health issue. It was not smell. Thank you for the reminder. Odors, thank you. It was the odors. That was the issue. You know, because this just kind of goes back to what I said is, you know, even if you get it cleaned up, is it going to start all over again? I, the odors that we, I'm sorry, I can't remember what, what did, you had said that you went over there, right, Ryan? It was not septic. It was not.
Well, but the issue is a Medina County Health Department issue, but that has nothing to do with the issue of this being a zoning violation. This is a zoning violation. It's been a zoning violation for 10 years. He's received 10 years worth of letters. I have personally knocked on his door with Tom Z. We've done everything possible to assist this man. We said that the community would assist him and I offered to have community members come in and be a part of that. I had phone calls from community members that wanted to be a part of it. I mean, this is a fantastic community that wanted to rally and we could not get a response from this gentleman at all. So the resolution is the notification to the resident that if he doesn't get it cleaned up, we will move forward. And I don't have an updated resolution in front of me because I didn't want to move forward on one unless I had the agreement from the trustees to go ahead and garner another one.
Well, before we do this, where are we going to draw the line? I mean, what, what properties do? Are we going to get in the business of cleaning up properties around the township?
I think we have a duty to do that. When there are zoning violations, we absolutely have a duty to do that. And when we've been emailing and messaging and sending certified letters for a course of 10 years and we expect everyone else to keep their properties nice and neat and clean, we absolutely.
See that. I mean, you drive around town and you see properties that are in disarray and and, and whatnot. And this is the only one I see we keep coming back to and I.
Well, this is the first one of five and Tom Z sends you consistent letters, updating you with pictures on the zoning violations in Hinckley Township. And they have not, they've been withstanding for well over five to seven years. It's not, it's a tedious process to do it and we want to make sure that we are giving the, the resident as much information and support as we can prior to this step. And we always do.
I have a quick question though, just about another component of this. I think there was a safety concern. And my question was, the estimate is that it's going to take approximately two weeks to clean up, which would mean these folks are going to be onsite for two weeks. And I know that at the time you talked about just cleaning up, you had talked about having police available. And I'm just looking at this from the police that might be, I, I don't know, is that still going to be required because you will and need to talk to Chief Setner about.
Yeah, it's a good question. And I think trustee Asher, you said you were going to speak with Chief Setner about it. I have not heard any responses to what, what he had said. That, that was something that was said publicly here. I don't know how true it is. I can't believe.
Well, I, I know the board had talked that it might be necessary.
I did talk to Chief Center and he had Sergeant, Sergeant, Sergeant Schroll looking into it and I think there, maybe the CAD system doesn't go back that far. So they were going to dig a little bit deeper.
I'm just talking about the additional cost of an.
Right, no, I'm going back to the safety. Melissa's asking me if I followed up with Chief Center. And I followed up with Chief Center and they were going to do a little bit more digging on it.
I just think it's something you should discuss with Chief Center if you decide to move forward on this because it will impact his payroll.
Do you want me to continue to follow up with him or would you?
Yeah, why don't you do that? And, and then in anticipation, Melissa, prep a resolution in case everything works out, okay?
Perfect. All right, to continue on, I have a motion for Rubel, Schaefer, Crew and Fisher to attend the Northeast Ohio zoning workshop at the non-member cost of $70 per person.
Second.
Second by Asher, all in favor?
Aye. Perfect. And we've got a cemetery deed here. So we'll need two members from the audience to come up, if they will, to witness the signatures of the trustees on the deed. Told you, Jim.
Melissa, this says, and I'm sorry to back up, this says 280 on here. And the, the motion was for 70 a person. Is that for them?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, actually, we should have them all sign. Let's do that first. Trustee Asher?
Say cheese.
You can put that on your credit card.
I think Suzanne's going to put it on.
Probably better on yours because she has to buy postage on hers.
Okay.
In case she, and she has all those others charged.
Okay. I don't have any.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. I'll let you guys, we've got the annexation appeal before me.
Okay.
Did you want to move forward with that conversation before? Okay.
Please.
The annexation?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I'm not sure if you each had an opportunity to speak with Al. He called me while you were both out of town. I talked to him a couple of different times about the option to appeal the annexation. Um, one of the first questions I asked, well, I mean, the first question I asked him is, is it really worth it? I mean, does he think that we stand a chance? He thinks that we stand a very good chance of winning the appeal. I'm not sure if you both had an opportunity to read the email that he sent on May 15th regarding the decision from Eaton Township that he represented, where the Ninth District Court of Appeals ruled in favor of a township. So now there's case law to back up the appeal and he feels that there's a very strong chance that we could win an appeal. He said, it would be approximately to appeal this and see it through would be approximately between 15 and $20,000 in addition to what we already paid the first time around. It generally takes about one year from start to finish with the appeal process. However, he feels they, everybody's going to have to submit their briefs to the courts and he feels that a decision could made, could be made in as little as six months based on the briefs alone. And that would lower the cost from the 15 to $20,000 because that's assuming it, we see it through for the entire one year and go to court over this. So if we are going to appeal the annexation, we would need to decide that today because Thursday is our deadline.
How much have we spent?
A little bit in excess of 15,000.
So just for the public's knowledge, and we've talked about this at previous meetings and I think it's interesting that the process kind of woven right over it. We approved, the BZA here in Hinckley Township approved this, this Drug Mart project in December 2021. Trustee Asher and I voted against the CRA in June of last year, 2022, and yet Drug Mart still purchased the property. They cleared that property in December of 2022. It's interesting to me that one of the commissioners stated that we were being short sighted in our vote on the CRA, which we ultimately did vote to give to Drug Mart. Because the bottom line is we can't compete with Brunswick. They have 100% tax abatement and we only have 50. And so now we're in this position where we have to talk about annexation appeal. And I'm curious what the people here think. If they think we should move forward and spend these tax dollars on an appeal process.
Yes.
Yeah.
I also.
Okay.
And I also think that.
Jim.
Jim.
Yes, I also think that the trustees ought to consider a letter to the commissioners because I believe and I'm trying to be tactful the way I'm saying it, the commissioner's response and the derogatory comments they made about the two of you were not appropriate at that meeting. For them to call you short sighted, for them to, him to belittle you, I don't think was the right approach as a person is supposed to represent the entire county. And it shows his, in my opinion, Brunswick bias from his background. So I do think it's worth you guys going back. I also think that they didn't take in considerations, little things like their employees when it comes to the taxes on employees, if it's in Brunswick or Vincent Hinckley. They glossed over all that. So I do think it's worth you appealing it. And I do think if there's a way to get more of an independent view from the county, I'm not sure who hears the appeal, whether it's a court or whether it's the commissioners, again, that I don't know. But I do think they were short sighted in their opinions and pretty derogatory to the two of you, the way they were speaking.
Water off a duck's back, Jim. It's apparently the life of Jim, so it doesn't bother me.
That's why we have the same initials. It's water.
Jim, I'll tell you just one thing that very, the commissioners have very, very little latitude. Comments notwithstanding, he totally could have kept that in check, but they have very little latitude in the decision they make, whether to approve or disapprove the annexation. And the portions that are in question aren't anything that they took into consideration when they made their decision. Right now, what the attorney is telling us is something that Brunswick is not doing that another city entity did in the same manner. So we may be able to capture that as a way to appeal this. And it sounds, it looks very good from the opinion that was rendered by the court, so.
That was my last, that was my last note. I forgot to include is that Al Schrader feels that he refers to both township issues as essentially identical. So it was, it was one, and I think he won that, I think he won that appeal the week of our hearing. It must have been because.
Nice though, it was a week earlier.
Well, right, I mean, but that email was sent to both of you on May 15th. So I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to read it. If anybody else has any public opinion, I mean, if we want to, we, well, we need to make a decision today. And I told him, I would call him or email him. Martha.
I.
Can we? Okay.
Yeah. So, all right, so I would recommend.
Does anyone else have anything to add? Any decisions, comments, opinions?
Well, in the long run. No, go ahead.
You sure?
Yes, positive.
He's a gentleman.
Right. Nikki Long, 1941, Parker. I wish Bethany was still here. I, I, I guess my request would be that if you do decide to appeal that you would sort of remove Bethany from you know, your communications, only because what I learned recently, and you guys probably already know this, but I would have liked to have asked, asked Bethany a few clarifying questions, but I thought that Bethany was here representing the county when she, you know, talked to you about a tax abatement. But in fact, the best that I can gather is that she runs an organization that's sort of like a chamber of commerce for Medina. She does, her organization sits in the county administration building. I'm not sure whether or not they pay rent and there is a link to her website through the county, which makes it look like she may or may not work for the county, but the bottom line is this, the best I can tell, she runs sort of like a chamber of commerce. And companies or municipalities can pay her corporation to be on the board. So there is a, a board, I'm not sure what it's called, Medina County Economic Development Corporation Board, maybe, but two of her board members are the City of Brunswick and Discount Drug Mart. And so to me, if she's receiving money from those two entities, she's not an independent arbiter in this process. So I would ask that you, whatever your decision is, that you would just sort of keep her out of the loop because I don't think that she can be an independent arbiter.
Between the attorney and the court of filing an appeal.
Okay, okay.
But yes, you are correct. It's, it's a corporation. She's a director on the board. And that's, that's their job. That's their business to try and bring business in.
Sure.
Medina County and make connections within all of the cities and communities.
Right, right. And that's fair. And, and she does a good job of doing that. I just, I was under the impression that she was independent and sort of didn't necessarily support one township or one municipality over the other or one business, you know, over the other. But I, I'm not sure that that's the case anymore. So I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Did you want to speak too, sir?
No, it's been addressed.
Okay.
All right, do you have a motion?
Well, so.
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna have to do two things. One is you're gonna have to. One is you're gonna have to think the resolution to, to appeal the commissioner's decision, and the other is you're gonna have to make a motion to hire Al Schrader for an amount not to exceed for that purpose. Okay?
I don't have that ready, so hold on a second. Then we need a resolution, what was the resolution?
Hire Al Schrader.
The motion was to hire Al Schrader, the resolution is for what?
To file an, an appeal. Appealing the decision of Medina County Commissioners regarding the.
Annexation.
Annexation of the West one hundred and thirtieth.
So moved.
Property, well, we could put the parcel number in.
Only wants to know she can say so moved.
Well, I think, I think you can. I think you can cobble it together.
I think that's her saying that.
No.
I think you can. You can do it.
All right, I, I'd like to adopt a resolution to file an appeal on the Medina County Commissioner's decision to annex Brun, annex the southwest corridor.
Southeast.
South. East corner of the township.
At. Route three oh three.
At Route three oh three and West one hundred thirtieth.
Second.
It was cobbled.
You did fine.
Call the roll, please.
Swine heck?
Yes.
Ashwell?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to hire Al Schrader to appeal the annexation in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Second. Call the roll, please. Yes.
Ashwell?
Yes.
Yes.
Any further discussion on that topic?
I will email him tonight and give him a call tomorrow morning.
Trustee Augustine.
I'd like to make a motion for Suzanne Peterland to take the OTA webinar on June twenty first, records knowing what to throw away and what to keep in the amount of twenty dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can she record that, is it allowed? No? I'm just asking.
I don't think so. I actually, because it's a webinar, I don't know, maybe she can. Um, I wanted to just give an idea to the trustees and speaking with the Hinkley Garden Club about, um, some of the, the work that they've been doing in Town Center, and, um, thought it might be appropriate for the township to purchase two trees in memory of trustee Schulte and trustee Rhodes to be placed on, at the Historical Society on the, near the property line, adjacent to the parking lot. Wanted to get your opinion before I put in any words.
Were they veterans, were they vets that we could plant a tree?
Historical Society is not veteran, um, specific, which is why we've been planting trees in that vicinity.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking.
Oh.
If they were vets, we could put it at the Veterans Memorial. Does anybody know?
Not that I know of.
I mean, I don't have a problem with that.
I don't either.
Okay, I will look into some tree options. I will get an email from you. We will work to make it something specific to Ohio, Hinkley area, deal? Um, I want to do a special thanks to the Highland Football Team. They came out to some of our Hinkley, um, residents, specifically some of our elderly, and did some cleanup in their yards for the spring, and so I just wanted to, um, thank them. Also, a special Memorial Day thanks to every single person that touched this Memorial Day Parade, especially our fire, police service departments, admins, the, this, this amazing group here, fiscal officer and the trustees, and all of the endless, um, volunteers that helped. I just wanted to express my gratitude to all of them. And I wanted to see if we could have conversation about the old fire station east wall renovation, that.
Sorry, you just spent that money.
On.
The attorney.
The attorney. Well, that money was a donation designated for the east wall, right?
You spent.
The donation money?
It was for improvements to that, not specifically to the east wall. You guys have used portions of that money for other projects.
So how much money is left for that?
I don't know, I'd have to check my Excel spreadsheet.
Okay, because I thought that was going to be specifically used for that.
No, it was used for the fire station. And over time, work has been done, like the work out front, the concrete, the wall, the grass, all that.
Just for a sneak peek, just for a sneak peek and to.
Yeah.
It's, it's actually on my wishlist.
Yeah, I mean, that, that could be something.
Good.
Based on that, but I, I can tell you that based on the, what's left in the building line at this point. And that's where your money for your attorney's gonna have to come from, as I was just looking.
Okay, because I thought the donation request was pretty specific that it should be.
It, the money.
Towards that.
That, not to the east wall. The east wall didn't exist at that time, it was the general renovation and improvement.
Of the community center, so why would the attorney be covered under that?
I'm not saying that I'm going to have to reallocate money.
Okay, so, if you can give me an idea, there's no money left in that, that donation?
It's, I'm not moving that money, we, we have a big pot of money.
Okay, I thought this was a separate line.
It isn't a separate line, it all goes under buildings. I keep a separate spreadsheet for the donation portion of it. And I, I can tell you how much when I get home and look at my spreadsheet. All the, all the trustees know.
Thank you, that'd be nice.
Thanks for that, but I can tell you, there is not even enough money there to do the front of the east wall, based on the estimates that have come in, what, four times?
Yeah.
Hire every time.
Okay, yeah, hire every time.
Okay. Um, the citizen of the year, I just wanted to briefly touch on this so that the trustees are aware. This will no longer be a township function, there was a lot of, um, chat about the citizen of the year this year, saying that he did not live in the township. It has not been mandatory that the citizen of the year live in the township. It has been mandatory that the citizen of the year had lived in the township. Um, this gentleman was, was nominated when he lived in the township, and then again, when he moved out, and, um, he won it. I also wanted to share that I have been on this committee since before I was a trustee. I actually presented Emma Schulte with her Citizen of the Year, um, award, and was very honored to do so. And with all of the different people that were in the pool for this specific year, I actually, um, recused myself and didn't even vote. This is, um, now going to be taken over by the Chamber of Commerce, which has been the, um, host of the citizen of the year in past years. And when the chamber shut down, the township took it over. And so the chamber has expressed interest in hope, hosting it again, so that's how that will be moving forward.
Don't, we need to.
I did not.
Agree to that.
This was a township function, I thought this was always an outside function.
It kind of is an outside function, but I think because it was being run through a township email, there was confusion, and then we got the first records request we've ever had for citizen of the year this year. And, um, in speaking with the chamber, they're, they wanted to take it over again.
Shouldn't we vote on that then?
Well, I.
If it's a township.
I don't even think we should acknowledge it as a township function, as it's never been.
It's never been a township. Yeah.
And actually.
So maybe that's not the right word.
Yeah, I don't think that's, yeah.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Um, also, a motion to reimburse the Hinkley Garden Club an amount not to exceed a hundred and seventy one dollars. I think we got a bill for a hundred and seventy dollars, it's a mod sense.
Didn't we just? Was, I thought it was two something.
Can we just sign a check for three something?
I think, I think that had to do. Yeah, we, we had.
Planters. What is this for?
This is for plants, they've done a fantastic job, our town centers never looked more beautiful.
Previously approved a purchase of the planters from Home Depot that my dairy picked up, and those were on our township.
And that is not this.
And that is not this. These are, these are plants and soil that, that were purchased in the receipt, but there were Home Depot receipts.
Okay.
Maybe what you're thinking of.
Did you move that?
That was my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is all I have, thank you.
Trustee.
All right, so we already reviewed water letter. Um. I wanted to, um.
Talk quiz, how do you spell Hinkley? Yeah, everybody knows this one.
Are you stealing my thunder?
No, go for it. I just.
You're kind of stealing my thunder, okay. I spoke with ODOT, in case anybody's noticed, there's been a couple signs that have been up, put up recently. One in Sharon that I saw, one on River Road, um, where Hinkley is missing its K. Uh, I contacted ODOT about this. Guys, I don't know how many more of these we're gonna see, okay? It's like, basically, anywhere where they're replacing a sign, it's gonna be spelled wrong. ODOT ordered the signs correctly, but they were printed incorrectly. So it's gonna take a couple weeks, but we're gonna get our K back, and hopefully.
Is that what they told you?
Hopefully, we're gonna get that corner back with our K back.
Do we get the signs, do we get to keep the old signs for shooting practice?
I, I have not asked, I've had a lot of people ask me if they can take the sign. Let's just get it spelled right first.
The trustee Ashwell said they couldn't even spell it wrong, they left the K out instead of the C.
They didn't even do the right, wrong spelling.
Could offer building funds.
So, well. An entrepreneur, I like it, all right. So, if you see more Hinkleys without the K, they're working on it. You know, checks in the mail. Um, then I also wanted to add on to that, that, um, when I spoke with ODOT, I just wanted to clarify something that was said a couple months ago about, um, the county adding the cross traffic does not stop, um, to the stop signs at six oh six and Stony Hill. That's not a county stop sign, it's an ODOT, it's state of Ohio, and they have actually done two traffic studies there. I think they said one in two thousand seventeen or nineteen, and then they just did another one, and they found it's not warranted. So they will not be placing the cross traffic does not stop at six oh six and Stony Hill. Which, if you, if you pay attention, because it's kind of like wallpaper, I think, sometimes in the back of your mind when you're driving, but on the township roads, I think the township put those on all of our stop signs, because when I drive by, I can always tell which one is a township road, because we have the cross traffic does not stop. Um, I wanted to, oh, let's do the.
Clarified that this was an ODOT issue, I think early last year when we were working on it, we thought it was the county, and the county pointed to ODOT, and that's, I've been having conversation with ODOT about that intersection.
I, it was, it was said a couple of months ago, so I just wanted to clarify. Um, then I would like to make a motion to approve the annual managed security for the administration in the amount of two thousand two hundred ninety eight dollars, fire in the amount of three thousand two hundred seventeen dollars, and service in the amount of four hundred and fifty nine dollars from Lighthouse Solutions, for a total amount of five thousand nine hundred seventy four dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, wanted to talk about the green space levy, Melissa, we had said, um, we could talk about that at this meeting, at our last meeting. Um. And I am ready to have a conversation about that now, if you both are. Jack, I know you've already said, um, you're not in favor.
I have.
Of a tax. Um, but I am ready to have discussion with that, Melissa.
I don't actually have a preference either way, I was just doing my due diligence based on the comprehensive plan audit survey results that the majority of the people wanted to see the green space levy resurrected, and so I thought I would have a conversation about it, I don't have a, a preference either way. It would have to be something that would be spelled out quite clearly, and I think in my mind would be, we would work with other entities like Western Reserve Conservancy, Medina Parks, um, and things of that nature, if we were gonna move forward with it, that's just how I envision it. But like I said, I don't have a preference either way, I just wanted to do my due diligence.
Okay, well, let's discuss it. Um, I think that the first step would be, if we are going to proceed with the green space levy, is, um, we would want to make committee. We need to get a list of, what do you think, seven people? To, who's gonna be on this committee, where's, where will the land be? How much are we looking to purchase? I mean, there's a lot of questions that are gonna have to be asked, so. Thoughts on that?
I am still not in favor of it, same thing with taxes, I, and I stated before, I think there are other entities better equipped to handle green space than this township. This is still a township at the end of the day, we're not a municipal corporation. We don't have parks and recreation department. We have four service guys that are busy cutting berms, doing roadwork, plowing snow. I don't think we have the time or wherewithal to handle any kind of a green space that we would take under the township's property. That's my opinion.
Which is why I would recommend working with Western Reserve Conservancy and other entities to assist in that process.
I'd rather see a committee do that, to engage outside entities to look at obtaining green space.
Well, they are, are already actively doing that, those agencies.
Yeah, one thing that hasn't been considered is that, you know, if the township had funds to buy land, it may create a disadvantage for those entities like the Cleveland Metro Parks and the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, because they, they accept donations, they work with grants, they, it's a whole different mechanism for acquiring the land. And would, in fact, with the limited amount of available land left in the township, would that be a disadvantage in the process of actually preserving the land to have?
Most likely.
Funding available from another source. And, and to be honest, with the price of land, when we did it back in two thousand and seven, and it still failed, land was not the cost it is now. And we were struggling and looking at ten years down the road before we could even consider purchasing anything of significant significance. And that has only been exacerbated by the value of land in our current missions, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure it will have the impact that, that it, uh, is hoped to.
I don't think it will pass either. I, I mean, I don't think it will pass, but I think that, um, you know, that's what.
What I'm saying is, even if it did pass, the first, even if you did a one mill levy, which is a lot of money for a property owner to put into a levy to purchase land, you'd have three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars collected. I know a house, a range house on one, you know, I mean, I'm talking about, that was a lot of money sixteen, seventeen years ago, and I'm not saying it's not still a lot of money. But putting this into perspective as to buying two million dollar pieces of land that would have the impact that's hoped for.
You'd have to have a levy that would be exorbitant.
You, you would, or you would have to be saving this money up for years, because if property owner wants to sell their property for two million dollars in two years, they're not gonna say, well, we'll hold off, in seven years, we'll have collected enough property tax revenue to buy your property. Um, again, I, I'm all for preserving land, I, I truly am, but I'm just. Um, again, I, I'm all for preserving land. I, I truly am, but I'm just wondering if, you guys have a lot on your plate right now, a lot of, a lot of items to really spend time and devote yourself to, and I'm not sure that this one would have impact or outcome.
Trustee Ashel, have you looked at the, these two thousand and six green space levy file?
No. Um, but I do agree with Martha. We do have a lot on our plate right now, and maybe this is something that gets, because we're not gonna make it for November. I mean, there's no way we would even be ready for a November levy. So maybe this is something that is revisited, um, you know, November, December, January, sometime like that. But I just, I said I would come ready to, to discuss it, um, based off of the last meeting, so.
And I think they did use a committee back in two thousand and six or two thousand and five when they first started this, yeah. Um, and that's, that's my understanding. But this is a really good read. If you've got some time, this green space file.
Okay.
Let me know. I'll put it on your desk.
Let you know if I need some, um, light reading material.
But yeah, I mean, I agree that it won't, it won't make this, it won't make this valid. Um, but I definitely think it's worth the conversation. I, I don't want it to just completely go away. But in talking to, you know, Nate, who runs Medina County Parks and, um, walking some of the Hinckley Township properties that are owned by Western Reserve Conservancy and having those conversations, you know, they, they are actively looking into Martha's point. If we are swooping in and grabbing them, we have to have either some type of relationship with them so that they can work with us and we don't have to deal with the maintenance of it, or, um, we just leave it for them.
Okay. End of discussion. Jack, did you wanna tell us again how you feel about it? Okay. Um, I wanted to talk about, um, the wish list timeline. We had talked about that at the last meeting also. Um, Martha, I know we talked about, um, like maybe needing some additional resolutions and things. So we had initially said to bring our, our wish list with, um, the estimates to our next meeting. But we have a lot going on right now. Do we wanna maybe push that back into July or August?
I was gonna ask if we could.
Okay.
Time agreement then.
September, good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Address it again in September, just kick it down, okay? And then I wanted to discuss the, um, July fourth meeting, which was canceled because it's on July fourth, which is Tuesday. Um, and I wanted to talk to you both about, I just, I think that we had, it's been a month since our last meeting and it's too long. So do we want to reschedule that meeting to maybe Wednesday or Thursday? Or do we want to at least schedule a work session meeting for the, the following Tuesday?
I'm gonna request that you have a regular meeting on the fifth, because you have to approve budget for twenty twenty-four. It has to be done for July twentieth.
So our next meeting would be the eighteenth, which would still be before July twentieth.
I'm not going to be here. Your next meeting is actually the, well, I don't wanna hold it off. I gotta get to the auditor.
It's fine.
And if there's any changes or questions, I don't.
So if we move the meeting to the eleventh, do we still wanna hold one on the eighteenth, or do we wanna go to the twenty-fifth?
Can we do the fifth?
Oh, the fifth.
July fifth will work for me.
Right.
So it would be a special meeting for the purpose of the regular trustee meeting.
So a special regular.
Yeah, I guess, whatever you wanna call it.
I will email Suzanne, um, six thirty normal time, or do you guys wanna do earlier?
Six thirty is fine.
Six thirty works.
You guys can all mark your calendars after the Fourth of July.
We'll probably need a proctor.
Special, regular, or workshop?
Yes.
Which?
Yes.
It's a special meeting because of.
According to the organization, that's.
It's a special meeting.
Special meeting.
For the purpose of holding a regular meeting.
It's a little convoluted, but.
Because if we.
If we, by putting that in there, we can make our motions and vote on things, right?
Work session won't allow us to make any decision.
We're good at that.
Special meeting would.
Right. Um, that's.
Does that work then? Okay.
July, July fifth?
July fifth.
Okay.
Are you good?
I am good.
All right, buckle up. Medina County Fair Housing Office sent us some materials relative to Medina County Fair Housing. I left these with Suzanne in the zoning office. You also have a letter in your packet saying what this is, and it just applies to fair housing practices and the law. So those are available for anyone who wants to see them. The county put out a flyer about digital inclusion and literacy. And this has to do with using the internet and whatnot, and all that business. I signed my wife up twice. I'm gonna.
These are her online. She can see this.
I hope so. So, yeah, I would ask if the trustees don't mind, because the county is endorsing that, that we just put a little blurb in the news section on the township website, that if anybody's looking for any information, they can go find on the county website. It's a good little program, especially if your folks are having trouble navigating email, whatever. Some good info in there. They take their time with old people. I know I've been through it, so.
I don't have an objection.
Yeah, Melissa, any, any problem with that?
No, that's.
Okay, thank you. Valley Brook, the folks on the cul-de-sac there that was never repaved, have asked about the island there, and we don't have any homeowners association up there in discussion with them. I came to an agreement with them that, um, we could plant some grass in there for them, and they'll take us over maintaining it. So they're gonna take care of dedicating the vegetation that's there, and sometime in the fall, if you guys are okay with it, Michael, go up, take a look at it. Maybe add a little soil if you have to and seed it for them. Any issues with that?
No, not at all.
Very good. Columbia Gas West Hundred Thirty Project update, based on Martha's concerns, and I thank you for that, Martha. I met with, uh, Columbia Gas and Brian Richter at the prosecutor's office. And Brian is working on drafting an agreement to make sure we have appropriate bonding for that project, in case there's any issues with construction or post-construction. He also went through ensuring that there was no reason that they couldn't use the right existing right-of-way, and came to a consensus that this is the best option to go move forward with on that. The, uh, I have one more add-in that I didn't talk about. ODOT approached me with a, uh, they need a, they're doing a right-of-way acquisition down on three oh three by six oh six, where the culvert is down there for some culvert work. Basically, they said they're taking it. They have, they can exercise eminent domain. And so I took it up to the prosecutor's office, and Brian said, well, we can fight this. I'm like, Brian. He goes, he said, don't have anything down there. There's no reason to fight it, but we could. With that being said, we're gonna reap a huge windfall of seven hundred and forty dollars. Maybe we can renovate these tile carpet squares in here with that. I don't know. But Brian has that, and he's gonna figure out what we can do to get that done, to sign it. Um, I have a motion for the EMA.
This is the update?
The EMA resolution that the updated sent, sent out. So I would move to adopt a resolution. Do you wanna put a number in there, Martha?
I'll put it in.
Okay. Move to adopt a resolution to join the Medina County, to join the Board of Medina County Commissioners and the chief executives of all or a majority of the other political subdivisions of Medina County to enter into a written agreement to establish a countywide emergency management agency in accordance with Ohio Revised Code Section five five zero two dot two six, by endorsement of the amended agreement executed by the Board of Medina County Commissioners, Resolution Number two three dash zero three five four, approved on May second, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Seconded by Ashroll. Call the roll, please.
Swede?
Yes.
Ashroll?
Yes.
Yes.
I will circulate this for signature in a moment. Rock Ridge Estates, Rock Ridge Estates. They submitted their plan to the township, and at that time, if you recall, we looked at the road specification resolution. There was that line in there that said anything had to be approved with another resolution. Worked to get that out in the, during that time, I talked with Davey, who is the architect for it. They said, well, since we're gonna do that, they're gonna modify it and bring the standards up to what would be in the current resolution, twenty-two feet wide, eight-inch thick pavement, which they did, and then submitted to the county before we passed a new resolution. So the line about a separate resolution to approve it was still in there at that time, and I talked to the prosecutor's office. He suggested that we just do another resolution to get it over with. So I would like to move to adopt a resolution to approve the road section proposed for Rock Ridge Estate subdivision on Stony Hill Road. Road section proposed as complying with the Hinckley Township Rural Subdivision's special residential road specifications, including eight-inch pavement with dialled joints and a road width of twenty-two feet wide, as submitted to the Medina County Commissioner, Medina County Engineers' Office.
Second.
Second, my Ashroll, call the roll, please.
Swede?
Yes.
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 And finally, in accordance, uh, with the discussion about utilizing the ARPA funds for the road project at this time, I talked with the, uh, Greg Beck, the attorney for, that we talked about with the ARPA funding, and he said it's okay for us to move forward with a resolution to advertise, uh, the Valley Brook project. So I would move to adopt a resolution which authorizes the Medina County Engineers' Office advertising the twenty twenty-three Hinckley Township Concrete Bid for TH three five seven Valley Brook Boulevard, Brook Hollow Oval, the two nine five Valley Brook Boulevard in the Gazette on June sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Details will also be available at hinckleytp.org. The bid opening shall be on July five, twenty twenty-three, at one P M. in the Medina County Engineers' Office. The engineer's estimate for this project is six hundred nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Seconded by Ashroll. Any discussion?
Or is that gonna be the first thing we talk about at the July fifth meeting, is the opening of those bids at six thirty?
Well, I don't know. We'll get that from that.
Through the county?
Yeah.
At the county, okay.
She'll do a spec sheet.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I need to make sure.
Asher, um, Swede?
Yes.
Ashroll?
Yes.
Yes. And Greg Beck said that when we go to move forward with the.
Once we get the bids.
That's when we do the ARPA resolution.
Yes. Any further discussion from the board?
No.
Anybody in the public like to speak? Gotta come up. It's a whole new world, Jim.
Uh, Jim Larson, Twenty Car Road, I have a question on, on annexation. When you file this appeal for annexation, does that hold in advance the execution of the annexation process for the duration of the, the appeal goes on?
Yes. Yes. So if it goes on for a year, they can't start building. I mean, everything's, everything stalled unless they decide to withdraw.
So Drug Mart is inconvenienced in their execution of building their structure.
Correct.
Unless they wish to come back to RBZ or our zoning code, or our board of trustees to move forward.
They would have to withdraw their request for annexation.
And you'd still get to sing karaoke.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I, one other observation, having attended that annexation meeting and kind of read pretty much everything that has been written about it, I think all three of you were well within your rights to have voted what you believed to be the best course of action at the time. And my opinion was if you had voted to approve the abatement when it was originally presented to you, Drug Mart would have still found another reason to move on. And, um, as Jim Bielowski already alluded to, I think Commissioner Hambley's scolding of you two was way off the mark. And he only mentioned the abatement as the issue involved. Well, there, as you, anybody who was there would, would know, the Drug Mart representative gave two reasons for wanting this annexation. One was the manner in which the abatement was finally granted, and the other one was having to work with the Medina County Building Department. You'll notice that Commissioner Hambley conveniently left out any mention of Drug Mart having to work with his building department. And, um, I'm not so sure what the motivation is, and I'm not sure it really has any legs when you file your appeal, because you said whether the abatement was approved uh, or the, uh, issue of working with whoever's building department. But I think it's pretty, pretty obvious that if they get to work with the Brunswick Building Department, it's gonna be smooth sailing for whatever they wanna do. So anyway, I think he was way off the mark, and, you know, as Shakespeare said, methinks he doth protest too much. Goes on that long, all he's demonstrating to me is his long affiliation and allegiance to Brunswick, all things Brunswick, and he'd have done better just to say no, and this is why, and move on as the other two commissioners did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Garrett Robison. I lost my voice the other week, so. Um, I wanna ask two different questions. So one was on bringing the water line down. I, I, I run a small water line, and it's a pain in the butt. But what I was under, I don't know if I quite understood, it'll kind of be like a gerrymandering for, for taxes, so it'll only affect so many people that, right, it doesn't affect everybody. It only affects the twenty people or whoever's gonna tie into that line, correct?
An assessed project?
The, the water line coming down through.
It's a public assessed project. The property owners that would be involved would be assessed those taxes. They would be added on to their property taxes. So that thirty thousand dollars would be added on to their property taxes over the course of so many years with the twenty.
Just like if you don't pay your Kimball bill.
Yeah, so if, so if it only affects those twenty people and they want it, I mean, I don't.
They don't want it. That's, that was what the survey was.
Oh, well, I mean, it, like, across the street and a couple of restaurants, and I know we've had water issues here.
Yeah, but if those few people are the only ones who want it, everybody whose property that goes past, it still has to pay for it.
I thought, the way I was understanding it, was only the people that are tying into it would be taxed that extra money.
You get taxed to run the line, and then if you wanna tie in, it's an additional ten to twenty thousand dollars to run it from there to the house.
Okay, see, I.
Based on the engineer's estimates.
Okay, and, uh.
It was the engineer's.
Because.
Price this, this, wow.
It, okay, so I was misunderstanding that.
Okay.
Um, the other part was, so the guy wearing the blue suit, Brian, that Brian, so their company will collect like a point zero 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 two percent fee of all the taxes collected, because they, they said they'll add the fees in with the.
Yeah.
The taxes at the end, so they would add, okay, so I understood that part.
Gotta make his money somehow, yeah.
And then, what was the last thing?
I, they're all, I mean, that's, they have a job to do.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Oh, that's, I understand. And then about the Drug Mart thing, if they don't like it, they can sell the land and somebody else can, you know, build there. If they wanna go through all this court, you know, everything else, I, I think you guys are right to give a hundred percent of nothing for fifteen years, and then they're done with the building and they just abandoned it, or, you know, to do whatever they want with. I don't know, but to give a hundred percent of your tax base up for fifteen years, that seems ludicrous. Fifty percent.
It would have been fifty. We can't go, we can't do anything above fifty percent.
No, fifty is enough. I mean, they're.
Hundred percent, which we can't compete with.
No, I just, why would you even want to? I mean, if you're gonna lose that much of a tax, we, we need it for the roads. There're gonna be more people going in there.
But I won't go into it.
Right, I'm.
I'll talk with you after.
We can't go into it when we're appealing them.
But, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you guys stuck with it and appealing, so if they don't like it, they can move. That's all I got to say.
Hopefully we win, so.
Mr. O'Neill? Paul O'Neill, two three nine eight Weymouth Road. I'd like to address the Drug Mart thing, since we're talking about it. And let's say you go for the appeal and you win the, win the appeal. What's to keep Drug Mart from filing again?
What's to keep him from coming to town center and running water?
Maybe they're gonna.
Stony?
Keep it under twelve thousand square feet.
I, I, I don't know, but what's, where, where does it begin? Where's it end? What's the town gonna do to prevent something like that from happening again?
The only way to prevent annexation is to either create a. The only way to prevent annexation is to either create a jet agreement with Brunswick or become a village.
If we appeal it and win, I think that will send a very clear message. So let's just keep our fingers crossed. We're told our odds are good.
Anything else? This time I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:40 PM.
Second.
Seconded by Ashwell in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.